All right, well, we'll leave for the meeting. We acknowledge the Bundla and Garner people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are present today. So, welcome, everybody. We have an apology from Peter Clubbycar. Welcome, Sharon.
Hello, how are you all?
Good. I think this is your first.
No, no, I have sat in once before. I have no clue what I'm talking about, but I'm here. I'm a body on a seat.
That feels just good confidence. Thank you for that. We'll move into declarations of any conflict of interest on anything. Anybody got any changes in office that's worthy of noting and/or conflicts on the agenda items today? Got to know, all right.
Might be worth noting, obviously, one of the proxies is councillor Peter Border.
Yep.
So he's actually taken a leave of absence as he's running for office in the state government, say, election. Not compulsory, but none of us decided to stand down, I feel like, during that period.
Okay, we won't be seeing him until late May? Okay, all right, we've got the, we don't have the minutes, they'll be for the next meeting, so we've got the business arising. Cathy, did you want to speak to anything there?
No, not really. We primarily included the business arising, not necessarily a point of discussion, but, you know, because some of the business arising was in relation to the external audit plan and the interim audit is on the agenda for this meeting. And another item arising was in relation to the annual business plan and budget. So that's why we've included it on there. I'll leave the other items for the May meeting.
Makes sense. Cathy, just in relation to, I see there's a fair amount going into that May meeting.
Yes.
Have we overloaded May?
That's a possibility. We've got an internal meeting later this week to review the entire agenda to make sure that we're actually managing workload.
Is it possible to start at 10 for the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely. We can do that.
So we do, are you okay with that? Pat, I know you'd be happier with that, happier, not happier. Management, you guys okay with that?
Absolutely, not a problem.
Sharon, if you're there, you're okay with that, if Peter's not there?
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you for that. The only question I've got in relation to the business arising is on page five. Cathy, just that joint meeting with council, have we got any indication of a date?
Not at this point. Yeah, no, I don't have a date indicated at the moment. What I'll do is internally at our meeting on Thursday that we've got is we'll look to find some options of dates and circulate that through to the Audit and Risk Committee.
Yeah, I think that'd be, that'd be very worthwhile. It seems to be drifting out at the moment.
Yeah.
All right, I'll open it up for any discussion. Laurie, anything from you? Sharon?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
Okay, Pat?
No, I mean, I know that there's a fair bit of drift happened in that and there's a lot for May, but you don't actually want to see that drifting any further, so.
That's why I want to start earlier. Big day. Okay, so we've got a recommendation sitting there, so a mover from Laurie, a seconder from Sharon. All those in favour, that is passed. All right. We have now Anton and John, I think, we're going to spend some time with them without management to start with.
Yep.
Do I need a resolution or anything there, Cathy?
To go into confidence, yes. And then the confidential resolution will reflect that management left the meeting as well. So if you get a mover and a seconder to go into confidence.
Double mover, thanks Sharon, a seconder, thanks Pat, all those in favour, okay, we're now in confidence. All right, we have the report in front of us. Just a question for me, back to John and Anton. Just understanding why annual engagement and arrangement letters aren't issued? Is that something that doesn't normally happen in this sphere of government?
Sorry, arrangement or, sorry, you're talking about engagement letters?
Both, annual arrangement and engagement letters.
Yep.
Why they're not issued?
Okay, so typically with the engagement, because it's on a predetermined contract basis, you do one engagement letter at the start and it covers the entire period of engagement because it's a fixed term. And you only update them for any changes in terms and conditions or if standards require. And so very, very often they change standards or make those changes. So we issue them periodically as and when, if required, and have clauses within it that say we'll only reissue if there's a requirement. But we do do an annual audit plan and that confirms the scope of the, the scope of the audit. And so that is provided to the Audit Risk Committee and the council, so that reconfirms the scope as well as outlines all of our, you know, key areas for focus. And at the end of the year, we reconfirm all that through the audit correspondence. So we issue through our completion report and the audit reports that are issued.
So where are things like liability limits and so forth captured?
That's in the engagement letter, but also in the contract.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we've got the report there. Laurie, anything from you? Well, we've got management in the room?
Nothing further to add, so thanks.
Okay, Sharon?
No, all good from me, thank you.
Pat?
No, I'm just a little concerned about the number of leases being held over.
I think there's a specific action happening as well as our report that we've received from.
So there's a bit of Bentley stuff flowing through, which has probably held up some of them. But as I said, I think it's, Jerrine has been working through a lot of the, I mean, they were held up while we waited for our new lease templates a little while back. Now they've been slowly been getting rolled out, but I think a lot of them, because they are completely new templates, the actual process of updating them has been more lengthy than it has in the past. It's not sort of like they look at it and go, oh, it's exactly the same lease we had before and they tend to renew. They tend to have lots of questions and it's going to be hard to get the answers out of them quickly. So it's just, even the ones that are being renewed, it's taking a lot longer than it used to take with moving across to new lease templates.
It's probably not easy.
Can I just comment?
Sorry.
John?
So I was just going to comment on that. That's something that councillors have been asking and I guess consistently bringing up at the meetings and asking and for how things are moving forward with leases, because that is something that we were concerned about. One thing was the length of leases and the fact that people were in properties without leases and also the costs that they were paying or the lease payments that they were paying. So we have been, I guess, constantly asking and getting the answers. We're getting the answers, that's not a problem, but it is something that's forefront in our minds as well.
Yeah, looking at that Bentley paper, there's a fair bit of work to happen. And it looks like management are giving it the appropriate focus now. I think you're coming from far away behind.
Yes.
We might, we might just take updates on that as we roll along of how you're tracking with that, Cathy, if we could.
Yeah, very happy to do that and add it as a standard agenda item on the agenda for the next few months, so that it's there.
Even if it's an oral update rather than making you write something, just like that.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. But we will include it as a standard item for the next number of months so that you can, you know, hold us accountable indeed in terms of progressing that body of work that needs to happen.
All right, Pat, anything else?
Oh, yeah, I agree that it's going to take a bit of work and actually some nuanced negotiation. So it's actually, and there's risks associated with not doing it and doing it properly. So that all adds to the priority. I would say that one of the recommendations, or one of the recommendations that was put to us was that we treat these items as closed because they're part of an existing work programme, but I would prefer not to treat it as closed.
I think that one here is not, yep.
On the basis that I think it's important that we keep getting updated in relation to that item.
If I can make one more comment on that, sorry, Pat, but agree 100%. The other body of work which needs to and is happening in transition, parallel to the lease and licence review, is the building rationalisation. And what I would like to suggest is that we expand that particular item that we bring back to every Audit Risk Committee meeting with an update on our progress against the building rationalisation needs across the city.
We'll capture that in the notes. All right, we'll go to the, I'm comfortable, we'll go to the resolution. I'm going to make a couple of mods if we can. So if we make the first one, that we note the interim management report, including management's feedback. And item two, we note that the matters raised, other than expired leases, operational in nature, consideration and action by management. And that's then consistent with the policy put in place where we'd look at things and saying if they're not of a level of importance, they don't come on our agenda, basically with management. But it captures that expired lease one.
Yep.
Are we comfortable with those amended resolutions? Laurie? Sharon?
Yes.
Pat? Okay, I'll put it, thanks mover Laurie, seconder Pat, all those in favour, that one is passed for those two recommendations. Thank you for that. And I think that enables us to release Anton and John.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity and we'll see you as part of the year-end audit.
All right, look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone. All the best. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into the annual plan and budget, 2.2. Grant, I'll hand over to you if you'd like to provide some opening comments, please.
Certainly. So, yeah, obviously, this process has probably kicked off, I'd say, in December. I had a bit of a workshop with Audit and Risk Committee members and that was a bit of a, a bit of a time call on that day and we probably didn't get through all of the items there. But I think that was still a good conversation around a few key items around probably our renewal, our capacity for new and upgrade and our thoughts around just budget pressures and just structure of budget moving forward. And also that really, I think, probably that change in narrative a little bit to not be constantly talking about being financially unsustainable. Because I think our outlook has changed a lot in the last two years as we outlined in that meeting. But that, that doesn't mean we're saying we're financially sustainable, it's just that we're probably somewhere in the middle. And that really the focus over the next few years does need to be that budget management, really making sure that the chamber is, you know, has that discipline around budget and meeting our, basically meeting our goals is, if we can stay on the targets that we've got, we'll be, we're moving a long way towards that financial sustainability. Still noting, you know, we know that the airport is an area of concern. It's going to be a challenge for a number of years, but that we are moving in the right direction, I think, overall as a council and in its projections. So I guess that provided the context for it. I think having yourself, Grant, in attendance at that first workshop with councillors was good in terms of helping them sort of settle a direction, I guess, for the budget. You know, we do know, and look, we're in a very dynamic circumstances in Wales at the moment. And, and we know that, you know, there was a time there for a week or two where it looked like things could go in one direction. They've probably gone in a different direction because of announcements made by the state and federal governments, given more surely to the city. And, you know, obviously this was happening as we were doing some of that key work around the budget. But I still think what, what it meant for elected members is that at the moment, the rate increase that we go out to the community with is very important. It's, you know, while we've got to stick to those things around financial, you know, being, being disciplined, they also wanted to have some opportunity to see what, where can we bring that rate increase down to. And I think we discussed that around, you know, what are the opportunities to, to make sure that our, our projections don't change while adjusting that. And so we did start the process with a, with a projected rate increase of around 3.9%. And through work, mainly sort of identifying some alternate income streams that council have been working on over the last little bit of time. We've brought that down to a 3.1% rate increase without any changes to those projections. And I guess that, the, the, the thing that was different this year, I guess, is that in the rest, is that CPI has dropped off a little bit quicker than maybe was expected and our, and our wage increase was already locked in. Now, the wage increase is locked in at 4%. And I think if you look at that in isolation, you could say, well, maybe that's a little bit high and we, and we didn't do great during negotiations. But I think when you look back at the agreement as a whole, where we negotiated 5-4-4 in a time when, you know, some, at a point in time there CPI was around 8% and it was above 4 last year as well. So we've actually, this is the first year in about four to five years where our wage increase is actually above CPI. And so I think in the context of that EB itself, it's not a bad, it wasn't badly negotiated. And yet other councils have had much worse experiences than us, especially around ones that had them specifically linked to CPI or higher, CPI plus 0.5% or something like that. So, you know, there were councils giving out eight and a half percent wages a few years ago and we, we didn't have that. So, but the only thing being that obviously because the wage increase is fixed and that's about 35% of our costs, it meant that our, our rate increase couldn't be that nice 0.7% above CPI that we've had, we've basically managed to achieve in the rest of the plan. I guess bringing it back to 3.1, we've got it pretty close. We've actually got it slightly below this 0.6 above what our projected CPI is of 2.5%. So I guess for councillors, that, that's a little bit more consistency with that as well. They've been a sort of able to offset that, that wage impact.
Just on that, just for clarification, so 25-26, we've got 4% wage increase.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, plus the 0.5.
Yeah, so yeah, so 4.5 impact, but yeah, 4% actual wage increase.
26-27?
That's where, that'll be a newly negotiated EB. So basically, it doesn't quite align to the year, but we, our wage increase happens in October for our EB staff. And so that's how we build into the plan. Obviously, you can get slightly, a slight bit of difference from year to year because of that timing. But basically, management and we'll have to renegotiate in the next 12 months, yeah. So, you know, about this time next year, we really probably should be starting that process.
And 26-27, what are we allowed?
So what we've allowed in all the other years of the plan is CPI plus 0.3%. You know, I think management is wanting to probably get that as close to, you know, averaging CPI time or somewhere around that point, but at that 0.3 is basically the, the risk factor around that negotiating process. So that's what the plan is built on for the rest of the plan.
Thank you.
And one thing I will probably say, I think it's, you know, Justin's not here today, but, you know, Justin has made a decision on what the wage increase for management was for the, the year gone. It's actually been, it's been a bit delayed. It's a back data one. I think the stuff that started happening around the steelworks made it hard to make a decision. But that's landed at 2.75%. And I think that that is quite a good signalling, what we've discussed internally. I think that's part of that signalling to maybe the rest of staff at some point is that wage increases have probably come back down into that more normal range. I think that 5-4-4 is above where we were headed over the previous years. We were sort of somewhere in that 2% to 3%, which is where you'd probably expect wage increases to average over time. You know, in theory, 2.5 over time is where CPI is meant to average. So probably around where wage increases should average. So that, I guess, is, assists with that negotiating potentially next year. The plan is built on renewal, still happening as and when projected within the plans. And there's been work done on especially the buildings that have been put into there to make sure they are the ones that need to be the work done. We do know that we've, from a new and upgrade perspective, we've only got one project basically budgeted for next year, which is the Forshaw Plaza, which is how we, what we discussed back in December. And we do know that the year after will probably, we've projected that that's where the Surf Life Saving Club portion would go with the other funding streams. So there's a couple of funding streams happening at the moment. There's potential that the actual timing of those two projects may overlap, but the spending profile is about right. If anything, it's probably projecting too much too early of those two projects.
So with your 6 million spend at the moment, that doesn't include a new Surf Life Saving building?
No, that's right. That's projected in the second year.
Yep.
Yep. And that's the one where councillors still having the fun of working through with the state government, what their announcement actually meant in terms of when they said they were giving us additional funding. There's still some fund confusion and Jade is working closely with them at the moment.
Okay, we can drill, drill in deeper when we look at post the budget.
Yes, that's right.
Return base, we can have a look at that specific items, yep, thank you.
And so we do know that that renewal will continue to look at and address and work through, you know, delivery of it. Because we do know that the Forshaw Plaza is probably the, is a big focus point. It's got grant funding, it's, you know, it's had a lot of meat around it. And so we've fully budgeted our renewal. There may need to be some retimings as, on a delivery basis, knowing that we have, we are bringing some more project management resources online soon as part of our recruitment processes. Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue to manage those. But yeah, we've, we've fully budgeted for renewal, but we did note in that December meeting that if renewal needs to push, it will need to push a little bit, but that it just shouldn't be a little bit like we've talked about almost with the audit committee, it can push a little way, but it can't be pushed long term because then we'll get ourselves into that fund backlog of renewal that we've had in the past when we had to spend $15 million over three years on our road programme to catch up on what hadn't been invested in. So I guess that's the, the big items and the big things that make up the budget. I mean, I think, and, and look, I think when you look at the projections, we've bought council without the airport and I know, I know, we do have to talk about the airport, but just for a second, council without the airport is basically now at a break even position. Dredging is throwing it out for the current year. We did mention that. It's a bit of a weird project that's one-off and very capital in nature, but hits your operating base. But really, every year of the plan now, council excluding the airport, is in a surplus, break even surplus position. The airport is still a challenge. We'll be bringing the reports to the next audit committee meeting to look through that Qantas offer. But we have built the projections off of that Qantas offer currently because that's the best knowledge we have, information we have at this point in time. One thing with the airport is, when we did our, I don't want to go too deep into the Qantas thing because I said that's a next month thing, but I think our Qantas negotiations, we've gone very conservative this time on our passenger numbers. And we do know that, I mean, that there is, there's potential that we've gone too conservative. But that was, I guess, a reaction to, we were sort of always not hitting the mark. And so I think we can build a model that has a little tiny bit of growth, you know, over time, back to a more long-term natural low point. Because when you look at the very long term of the airport, 60,000 to 80,000 passengers is what it's sort of naturally done over about a 15-year period, it always moved between those two. So 60,000 seems to be the natural long-term low point. You know, we're projecting in there like 48,000 was what our projection was. So I think there is some, some room to project a movement back to 60,000, but over a, over the 10-year period. But we can discuss that and that's sort of some of the ideas we've got around that model. Still doesn't look great. The airport is still a challenge. But I think, you know, council, we have lots of conversations about this. It is a, we feel it's a service obligation for council and we just sort of have to manage that. And I think even when you combine accounts on the airport, taking into account what we spoke about in December as well is that the airport can probably afford to, to carry about 50% of its depreciation as a loss. That's how lower air peninsula run there, the Port Lincoln Airport. And that's to do with the, the funding streams that are always basically available for renewal at airports that you don't get other renewal funded. When you, when you take that into account, I think that the plan, you know, by sort of 28, 27, 28, 28, 29 is really a probably like a naturally break even sort of point of view for council and the airport together, which is still a few years away. It would be nice to have that a little earlier, but, you know, we're working in the environment we're working in. So, yeah, happy to have discussion on anything in the budget, but I think that's probably what we're sitting at the moment, yeah.
Thanks, Grant. Sharon, I might go to you first, given you've had a deeper part of the discussion with council and management in formulating this plan. So anything you want to add or highlight to us in the paper?
No, I don't think so. I think Grant's covered, covered that as well as I, I would have, probably better than I would have. It is, the, the airport is something that we have continuously looked at as a council. And given that we rely on it to get specialists in that we don't have here and for people to travel, people such as myself to travel for treatment for cancer and that sort of thing, we really feel that we have an obligation to keep it going for the community. And the hope is that when things finally turn around for us and they, let's face it, you would hope that they would have to turn around, that it will start to make a, not necessarily a profit, but we won't, it won't be costing council as much as it currently is. So, but other than that, I think Grant's covered things as well as, as well as can be expected. Thanks.
Thank you. I might go to you first, Pat?
I just want to check, we're comfortable with the assumptions we've made?
I think we are. I've gone, so with, I mean, again, a key one for us is CPI. It's always the fun of, we always, but we'd never quite have it in time for, for this process. We've gone with, basically in line with the December CPI at 2.5. Most projections that send you around RBA, others seem to think that it will stay fairly consistent for now and that there'll be a little bit of a spike towards the end of the next year. So the next budget cycle, we're projecting sort of maybe around 2.9, 3% is where CPI will come back to. And so that will affect next year's rate increase. Wages are locked in and as I spoke about, I think that long-term wage assumption is probably fair in terms of what we experienced over the last period of time. I mean, the one that probably is a little bit, it's not, it's not, it's a little bit of a risk, but we did speak about this one, is around depreciation, sort of adjusting itself back over a number of years and being slightly below CPI, not negative, but being below that CPI figure. We're, we're going to have to review that on an, on an annual basis and look at how it's affecting council. I mean, the one thing is it is, and I've sort of spoken to this in the report a little bit. I mean, you do have a few years to adjust to depreciation, is that non-cash item. It's really that long-term impact on council. But if depreciation does not do what we're hoping and, and adjust a little bit CPI, you know, that might mean we need to make some decisions around service levels around assets. Do we need to push our useful lives out and actually reduce the service level around them? So that's probably the one assumption in the plan that will need to be carefully monitored over the next couple of years. But I think everything else in there is, is fairly low risk at the moment, yeah.
So if you look at those revenue items on page 21, where you're talking about a 2% or 0.2% growth rate and then financial grants above CPI.
Yep.
How much, there's a hope there?
There is. I think we've gone very, the way the financial assistance grants, as I said, I, having a look at some of the under, the grants commission data is fun. It's all transparent. You can see it. There's lots of fun things happening underneath it that are hard to fully predict. But council, I think, is still on that upswing where we're, we're getting, they do a fun thing where they show how every, what percentage of your ideal grant every council is getting. And no one gets anywhere near the full amount because they do a, basically a theoretical calculation and then they give everyone what they can afford out of the money, basically. We're still below the average of your theoretical amount of the grant, a lower percentage than others. And that has to do with how that grant actually works. They've got a lot of rules they work within. So councillors' grants aren't allowed to drop a certain amount within a, in a year, more than a certain amount. And so when councils are adjusting to new conditions, it can take a little while for it to happen. And so we've been on an upswing for the last few years and I think we're still looking at the figures on a bit of an upswing. The amount we've assumed in there from a, from an assumption, I think, is very low risk, that we, we will get something above CPI and the amount we've assumed is quite low. The 2% growth for rates, look, it's always a little bit of a risk. And if we don't get it, we're going to have to, that was probably going to have to reflect a slightly higher rate increase next year. And so that is a slight risk, council. We did, but when you look at, it's one of those things where we get the data really late from the, so as you get the valuation data really early, like the normal valuation increases and then they go and do all their reading. And sometimes you don't really know it until May or June. But when you look at last year, we actually got 0.35% of growth last year. And the amount of money we've been getting through by development applications and stuff still seems fairly high over the last sort of 12 months. And so that tends to be the, the thing, the factor that is the only thing you can really look at as, as to growth. So will we get 0.2? I think we won't be far off, but there is a slight risk and then that will mean an impact on the rate increase the year after.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, it's interesting with the rates growth, whether there's additional rates coming in or some being lost with people coming and people going. or some being lost with people coming and people going and things closing and opening and.
Yeah.
Of that, so that would have been a hard one to do. I mean, the other thing I was a bit disappointed, I suppose, that we haven't progressed further with some of the service reviews. Because, for example, this one's assuming an outcome from the service review in looking at an increase in childcare fees, whereas at one stage we were looking at whether there would in fact be any childcare fees. And so, but as for the other assumptions, I guess.
Do we see those reports?
We can't, we can't, we can't comment. Which is, I mean, disappointing thing is that we haven't seen those reports since taken eighteen months or more. And the just a comment really in, in twenty two, when we're looking at page twenty two, the KPIs, they're all financial KPIs, there's no KPIs that cover anything else according to this plan.
Yeah, so what.
Other than maybe Justin's.
Yeah, and so what we, what we've, me and Cathy actually had this conversation that what happened over the last few years is we've included within the annual business plan all of Justin's KPIs. But what we've discussed, I mean, one thing that makes it quite difficult then to like chicken and egg thing, where how do you adjust the Justin's KPIs outside of the business plan cycle? I think it makes it quite difficult to do that. And so what we've tried to do is pack that the, so those four, I guess, key performance indicators will also be in Justin's ones. But they're the ones that are specifically around delivery of the annual business plan and budget and the things contained within it. And that Justin's KPIs will still be bigger than that and have bigger scope. But that, they don't necessarily need to sit in the annual business plan. Because as I said, I think, I think it makes it difficult to then the timing of when you actually adjust those KPIs. So that was something me and Cathy discussed and that sort of pared back the KPIs within the annual business plan this year.
My read on that, Pat, is the first one, delivery of the strategic initiatives, just not financial delivery items.
Yeah.
When, when I look at what the programme is, there are some changes in delivery and other activities. So I'm saying those are the non financial ones.
Yeah, that's probably the, yeah, that's true.
And I think it's good that you've narrowed down a top four.
Yeah.
You got the right top four.
Yeah.
But at least you've narrowed the focus and you can talk through that with your staff. So that's pleasing aspect for me, my perspective.
Yeah, a small number is better than a large number.
Yeah.
You've got to get the right number. And so I agree with that. Council's investing in the airport master plan, I don't think that could be done soon enough. So that was a good thing from that perspective. And obviously the community survey perceptions don't look great, but there's some comment about the timing of that survey.
Yeah, it's a.
In fact, they look quite awful.
They do, and it's a hard one because we got, we had three years worth of data and the data was very consistent. It was, you know, like, so it felt like the data was, you know, statistically significant and, and, and about right, like, because different people answered it every year and we got very similar answers. And then suddenly we got a downturn and not a downturn, like ups and downs, it's just everything was a downturn. And it, and look, it's, it's not, it's hard to just say, oh, well, it's the timing and we ignore it. But it feels like you need one more lot of data at some point to trend it because it was, I mean, the timing was that the blast furnace was probably at the height of its being down and things were starting to go pretty badly in the town right then. And we potentially just introduced, introduced this now rate notices with our rating review. And, you know, there was probably a few people that weren't getting answers that they didn't like on that. So I don't know if that's enough to have caused that much of downturn. It felt, it felt like there was just a lot of, it was just negativity. And it was sort of like, if you're going to answer the question and everyone's feeling very negative about everything, it's like the score is lower. It still needs to be tested. I think we need another year to see whether we pop back up to where we were. Is that our new position and we need to do something different?
It's got a very much a sentiment field.
Yeah, it did have a, yeah.
As a survey, but I suppose my question would be back to you, Cathy. When you look at all of those items and if those items matter to the, to the council, have you mapped your programme back against each of those items that are relevant to moving the dial? And are you comfortable that it will move the dial?
And that's a really good question. I would say in response to that is we haven't specifically mapped each of the items, each of the strategic initiatives back against these these indicators. It is a body of work that we do need to do. What I do know is that these indicators were certainly circulated through the staff. And as the strategic initiatives were being reconfirmed, you know, we were looking to see whether or not they were actually addressing some of these indicators. But we'll specifically do that exercise, Grant. I think that that's a body of work that needs to happen and we need to report that back into council as part of the presentation of this, of this annual business plan and budget. Because that's a really good filter to, you know, ensure that what it is that we're doing is actually responding to the sentiments across the city.
Good.
One thing I will say is that, that when Cathy, when that was designed a few years ago, they are meant to also align to what's in our strategic plan. So the thing they're meant to be questions that try and pull out some of that sentiment in terms of what we say we're going to deliver in this. So the mapping will be good, but in theory, we have mapped what we're doing to our strategic plan, so there should be some overlap.
Well, it should, it should definitely be linked back.
Yeah.
Again, and you should have a feel for where it will move the dial as well. You know, sometimes you might plateau it. But you've got to do that mapping back if this community perceptions report matters. Can you get that?
Yeah, so. And I guess if you move on to measuring your performance and so forth, or your achievements, measuring performance. I wasn't sure with some of the tracking comments, when you actually relay them against what we're progress is in terms of things like.
Yeah, like the current new ones, okay.
Delivery of initiatives outlined within the annual business plan on page thirty seven. The comment goes approximately forty percent are behind schedule. And then the comment is it's on track. Now, I don't know, but where I come from, forty percent behind is not on track.
Yep.
And so.
Yeah, Cathy, can we push that back to you guys to take a harsh look at your assessment progress? Because I'm with Pat on some of these that I think you've been quite gone to yourself. And if I was sitting there in the community, I'd say, come on, guys, be real on this.
Yeah, absolutely, happy to do that.
So take that as a gentle filter back across the performance outcome for the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. But again, we're getting individuals, if you just want to send through, we've marked saying really, that may give you a bit of insight of what you may need to look at on that. So we can do that.
Yeah. Now, why did I highlight that?
What about?
The amenity, the bit about almost half of, oh, sorry, page forty five. Half of the waste put in general waste bins is diverted to green waste.
Could be, yeah.
Would save a lot of money. And you think you can do it just by education.
Well, it's literally the only way we, it's the only level we've got. I mean, we do, we know, we've had discussions about this, we struggle, we, we have a lot of socioeconomic disadvantage in the city, which often can correlate to these things. But like, look, are we going to get to where some of the metro councils are? Maybe not, but to, for us, like, if you can lift that five percent or something like, you know, the investment actually becomes worth it. So, and, and I think we've had discussion and Jade's, you know, she's got a background in sort of environmental stuff. And one of her comments is because you have to keep investing in every year, otherwise you'll just get backslid as well. Like, you, sometimes it can seem hard to keep investing in those programs, but that's where you get the sort of change over time that does build those savings. But look, yeah, we know it is a, it is a challenge for our city.
Yeah, and if I can make a further comment through the chair. The city amenity body of work is multifaceted. We've got a multifaceted team which is working on that between our education area and city activation and, and, you know, community area to our regulatory services. So having a look at where there is waste that is on the verges and green waste, et cetera, ensuring that our regulatory services team are monitoring that and expiating as needed. We are also working with the local supermarkets, the local fast food outlets, et cetera, in terms of strategies that they can adopt to assist with the education process and also assist with ensuring that the areas around their establishments and outlets are actually clean and tidy. And so there's a multifaceted approach. Education in and of itself is not going to make the significant change that's needed. It's a systemic approach that is being taken at multiple different levels. And it's going to take time.
Thank you. Just to clarify for me, page fifty one, we've got a hundred thousand there for IT equipment. When, when did we defer systems issues?
I think there's a project in, to actually come up with that plan, Cathy?
Yeah, so I can give a little bit of an update on that one. So I, I, that's actually key sort of network infrastructure that whether we, no matter what software or other hardware we go down, but that is required. So there's some stuff around our city, it's basically how our sites link together in the city. That's just come out of our normal renewal program. Yeah, happy, we are looking to progress, the, the, the landscape's changed a little bit recently in that our current software provider has been bought out and their roadmap for the next year or two actually looks much better than the roadmap that they had before. So I guess when, it was a bit of a real changing beast over the last year or two in terms of software providers in the government space. It's starting to settle down a bit and I think we'll be able to progress something soon. We now have an end date basically on our current ERP, which is two thousand and thirty. So I guess one good thing about that is it gives you a defined date that you have to, you have to be, have made a decision and be completely implemented by. So, but yeah, we'll, we'll start looking at whether we think staying with our current provider will meet our requirements. It's probably the lowest cost option for us. Doesn't mean it's the best option, but now we've got, yeah, something we can work on, so.
So just to be clear, there's no capital item or project budget in there for a strategic shift in technology? This really made it so.
That's maintenance, that's right. But we may not need the capital investment now anyway, depending on which way we decide to go.
But I think you've allowed money in the budget as part of that review of the strategy around go forward.
Well, we'd already done that body of work about a year and a half ago that came to this thing. We did think that we were going to have to start potentially budgeting money to tender because we worked out that it was probably going to be a hundred grand to get ready to go to the market if we were going to change. As I said, I think the landscape just over the last month or two has changed a bit. And now we need to just go back and get and, and look at whether there's an actual option without massive capital investment, but we need to make sure that that meets with the, the body of work we did a year and a half ago. Actually meets our needs and is the best movement forward, so we'll progress that.
So it's all internal resources.
At the moment, yes, yep.
Probably also regarding grants in terms of our recent recruitment process.
Yeah, so, yeah, so our, our IT coordinator, who's been with the organisation for twenty odd years, is at retirement, he's retiring in the next couple of months. So next Monday, we've got the replacement that was starting, so we've got a bit of handover time between the, the old and the new employee. So, yeah, so that'll bring some fresh eyes as well to the, to the space. He's got some, some interesting background in terms of some international sort of companies. Yeah, so I think it'll be good.
So if you've got a work stream, say called strengthen the organisation, of which your IT strategy sits there, there is no strategy or, there's a strategy, but no stream to fund any of this.
No, and if you look on page forty seven, under information systems, that's that one at the moment, so that is that. But you're right, it says not yet budgeted, so there's no budget against that item, it's an internal resource one right now.
That's a gap.
Through the chair, I'm sorry for cutting in. I just want to draw to the chair's attention that councillor Todd has got a hand up, sorry, once, once you finish, Pat.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let, I'll let Cathy, I'll let Cathy, I'll let Pat finish and then we'll go to Sharon.
That's okay, I can stop for a while.
Okay, Sharon, you had a question?
Not a question, just a comment with regards to some of the things that Pat's commented on. One was around the airport master plan being needed sooner rather than later. I just wanted, I guess, to alert that the councillors have all agreed that that is of a huge, huge importance, given what the airport is costing us. The other one was around the survey, the council survey and the feeling around, you know, from my conversations with people in the community, that the council survey maybe might be was, I, I think, and from what I'm talking, hearing, talking to people, that was quite significantly impacted by the feelings around town recently with the, the, the things that have been going on with GFG, the hydrogen coming, not coming, that sort of thing. And lots of comments around council's perceived lack of action with GFG and what council should be doing. You know, comments a, a, as unrealistic as council should just take it over, that kind of thing. People feeling that council could have done a lot more. And also some of the other comments that you hear a lot of, council don't spend enough money on things like the Forshaw and money that council doesn't have to spend. So I just think those things are important, I think those things are reflected in that council survey. And then the other thing was around the waste and the cost of the waste. We're very aware of what the waste is costing and the end that we need to somehow do something about the illegal dumping. And bearing in mind that, as Grant said, we have a really low socioeconomic, quite huge component of people from a low socioeconomic background. We know that education will help some people, but it's not going to help all people. So some of the other things that council have discussed are around expiations for people, as Cathy said, who are leaving rubbish on verges and that sort of thing. We don't feel that there's enough of that happening. And also investing in some strategies to assist people with rubbish in the low socioeconomic areas who literally do not have the capability or the ability to dispose of their rubbish properly. You know, they're literally leaving it in the street. So we, we've talked about all different sorts of things like skip bins in those areas on, on, for lengths of time. I just, I just wanted to, I guess, confirm that those are things that council have also raised and some of the possible solutions and reasoning behind those things as well.
Thanks, Sharon. Back to you. Okay, I'll let you have another, if you need to, Laurie, over to you.
Thanks, Grant. I've got to say, I was a little bit frustrated when I read, read this document. And, and I think the reason why is, I think we're glossing over what some of the issues are. And we're not being clear enough on the choices we're making or not making. And so I just, just a couple of examples, I mean, if we talk about the report, the recommendation here is actually around a rate increase. So, so with whatever's going on, what we're talking about in this paper is a recommendation of increase the rates by less than what we need to. And then I go back when I looked at the thing around, you know, being short term financial sustainability and actually having a, quite a large operating deficit. And that deficit is not going away, the airport's not going away, it's a real issue. So we can pretend we want to put it aside and say, excluding the airport, you know, the number's going to be whatever. The reality is that's the world we live in and that's the deficit we have to stare into and the choices we have to make. Secondly, again, that survey actually shows by a lot of metrics what we're, we're doing, whether it be timing or not, is missing the mark with, with the average person. And I actually think a lot of that can be attributed as much as possible to the story we're telling and the way we're telling the story at, at the timing and the timing of telling that story. And so I, I just think that when we, when we actually have a look at this and the choices we're making, we need to be clear on, A, what is the situation and why are we investing into different areas? And how have we been going about doing what it is that we need to be doing to get those outcomes there? So if our deficit really is that deficit and we're going to be running a, an ongoing underlying deficit that's going to impact our short term financial targets, number one, we should be saying that. Number two, we should then be talking about the fact that we've now actually got the federal government, the state government and all these other parties on board to work with us to actually resolve the issue and to fix it. And the other things we're going to do around that are A, B, C, D. To actually resolve the issue and to fix it. And the other things we're going to do around that are A, B, C, D and E, number one. Number two, the choices we're making in relation to services are, we're going to continue with, you know, service A, B and C. We're going to slow down. These other services and we're going to reprioritise the movement of other other things that have sort of been half underway. And and act accordingly. And we hope that the outcome of what we're going to do, we're actually going to address the things that we've heard from from the community. In terms of, you know, not addressing environmental, not providing security, not doing A, B and C. So I think. To me, it's a really big framing thing in terms of being very clear on the language, not not shirking the real challenges we've got. And then actually putting the actions that we're doing in that context and actually dealing with it. But the airport is not going away and and we need to be acting on it. And when we have fixed it, we've got it surplus, we can then actually celebrate that as something we've really done. For the community, for whatever. And I think we still should be celebrating the fact that we've got the eyes of the country on us, helping us out to get. You know, a lot of these solutions in place and and delivering A, B and C. And I just think we're missing the mark on some of those things and then. To have the discussion really focus on, well, we're going to actually drop the rate increase, you know, because it makes us feel like we're doing the right things for the community and we're being prudent. I think it's only part of the solution. The other thing I would say in terms of a rate increase being smaller than a cost increase for the year. Is you have a compounding factor of that in that if you get it, if you lose that extra money this year. You actually have a compounding increase next year because when you go up by a certain amount, everything else has gone up by that certain amount as well. And I I just think we should be. Very clear on that and and not be afraid to probably. Be a bit more forthright with some of the choices we make and we need to make and the urgency with which we need to make them. So that that were probably the observations I had. And a lot of the other stuff that sort of Pat touched on. Were already there, so I'll just leave it there for for now.
Thanks, Laurie. From my perspective, what I'm going to give is a bit like Laurie, is observations, not changes to the number because. I think we're that far down the path now, the numbers, the number, and the council have really agreed on, as Laurie said, that rate increase. And on with Laurie, it's what's the messaging and the story we're telling here and what's the first chapter, second chapter. And in the end, I think we've got to couch this in the. Of, we've got a cost of living crisis. We've got a deficit. Of past we're dealing with and we've got a major employer. That is impacting on the overall environment in which we're operating in. Overlay on that, we've got a liquidator. In place trying to extract value and unpick. Not a steelmaking work, but a structured financed organisation. And there are risks associated with that. But we've got state and federal, particularly the federal government saying, we want to produce steel in Australia and it's going to be in Wila. So I think it's the messaging and story that goes with that. The overall increase, I'm a bit like you, Laurie, in my head saying, well, we're not meeting our costs, but I overlay cost of living. And the past issues we're dealing with, it's just not the current issues and what the people are going through within the Wila community. I would have liked to have printed a number below three percent if we could have, but I think we've still got to claw back. The past as much as also provide flexibility for the future. So the three point one. Is uncomfortable with the number. It's what we do with it. So I then start looking through the paper itself. And I look at the two actions that were coming out that we'd raised for, and this was around, well. If you had to pare back, where would you pare back and what are the opportunities? We are two years down the track and we still don't have that list. You know, the the comment from from management around, well, we're impacted by depreciation rates and the airport, therefore we don't need to do it. If we strip them out, we're okay. Well, to me, you need that opportunity list on your table. So you can make that conscious decision because management, you may not want to push changing some of the service levels. But if the council's saying we're dealing with deficit and borrowings, they may want to push you to do it. So I think. We need to move forward on what is that list, that if we had to go down that path, what is it? The other bit for me was around what gets kicked over year to year. And the comment was around, we were provided for that in the in the financial projections going forward. My comment on that was, well, it doesn't actually address. What the conscious decision of what stays on and what stays off, not that you've allowed for it, but can you do everything? Some confidence that that's being at least mitigated or dealt with this year is that there's less items being kicked over the fence. You know, we've got the major forshore activity happening. I would be interested in what's the four million we're pushing out, what that relates to.
It'll put it, there's a couple, one major project is sort of linked to the forshore, so the Marina Boat Ramp Project. That will roll over, like we're tendering it now. It's going to happen in around September. That's to be timed around the cuttlefish migration.
A couple of million there.
Uh, yeah, so that's a two point something million. So that'll probably be the majority of it. And then there's a few items, probably the the way L A's toilet hasn't progressed at this point. So that's probably four, four hundred and fifty thousand there. And then then you get down into sort of a couple of few two hundred thousands and things like that. So. It's really that Marina Boat Ramp is the main one.
So that gives me confidence that the situation's sorted itself out, not that we've made the conscious decision of, let's look at reprioritisation. And what we're going to do. I then look at where we've got balance and focus around asset management, revenue and cost. And I sit back and ask the question, so who's investing in the city and why are they investing in the city and what does that mean for council? And I don't get that feel for. Are we promoting investing and how are we assisting growth within the within the Wila community? And that's the revenue part for me. All I see is we're going to increase C P I on childcare fees and basically the rates are paying for everything else. So. That's the gap for me is. Who's investing? Why are they investing? And are we assisting that from the revenue side? I think we've got the asset management piece. We understand what we're doing there, but I don't think we've got the revenue piece and that comes back to Laurie's, what is the story there? I then look at costs and saying, we don't have a cost management focus within the organisation. We have a cost limiting focus, so we're prudent in what we're spending. But to go through the business and I'll look at, well, where's the cost programme going forward? We've got a churn ratio built in. Well, you have churn anyway. So that's just something, a benefit you're going to get. But other than that, there's not a lot in there and we're not even willing to bank in some savings on service reviews. To push ourselves hard there. So to me, cost is not a priority, it's a focus. But not a priority to go through the business and say, here's the opportunities that we need. I like that you've now got your narrow down on your focus and priority. I think we're getting that message through. So I think that is good from an organisation point of view. But it tax back to, do you have the right focus and priority based on the messaging and story? Just a point of clarification, if we if we could, when have we had the paper that then went to council to say that we're happy with a. Running the airport at fifty percent of the depreciation? So.
That was when we discussed in December because we then made that one of our sort of parameters. So that was when we discussed that that, yeah, had the December.
I remember you raising it.
Yeah.
But more of you positioned it, I don't know if there was any conscious decision to say, yes, that is agreed and that what it means for us. So I just think it's something we as a committee should circle back on at some stage, just so there's understanding of. That would be part of that review of the airport anyway. I'd take it because that's then looking at that longer term piece. So that so that would be my my statements, that these are the observations. The key back on that page thirty one around that sentiment index, I'd say. Is have we dialed the projects back in to say, yes, it will start moving the dial or at least hold the negative flow or the negative sentiment that sits there. And then then it really for me comes into. Year of the messaging, because I read the messaging and we're in the C O's report, we talk around the local economic conditions and that. You know, it's good the state and federal governments coming to make the pivot. I think we need to be deeper on the environment we're in at the moment. The risks that are happening within the moment as well as round one quarter mentor are doing. What the state and federal government are focusing on and what are we focusing on as a committee? So. Here are all these moving parts and these are the bits that are happening in our control, out of our control and what we want to try and message and push. As the advocate for Wila against each of those three parties that we're involved in. So I think there needs to be some consideration around some messaging there because I think that is a key point around that story going forward. And that's really back to probably not yourself, but the chief executive and the mayor. You know, it's it's that piece there that fits, it's that overlay of, if you picked it up, here's the elevator pitch. Around all the bits that are happening and why we matter as a community.
That's good feedback because I was when as Laurie was talking as well, I was thinking where does that stuff fit really well in there? And it was saying, I think. I was, that was where my mind was going to the C O report on financial sustainability, so.
Yeah, so so I didn't go to the the longer term. So as I said, the the budget, the budgets for me, it is one. I sit there and on page sixty and look at this year compared to next year, we've got a one point, a million dollar increase in employee costs. So part of that is probably six hundred thousand is just your rate increase, your four and a half percent. So I'm on page sixty. And I sort of sit there saying, well, what's making up the difference? Is this just where you've allowed greater employment because you've had vacant positions? That number is coming out of, I suppose, the material contracts and other expenses? Or is that number actually really, we're going to increase resources by one point one years?
One thing I would say, I would always, I wouldn't say it's going up by a million because I would always compare to the original budget. Because what can happen during the year is we get things like you have a vacant position, but it's been used to, a couple of vacant positions that are being used to fund labour hire. And it ends up in your contracting and other, and that happens through the budget review process. So I would always be comparing that second column to the last column for me. And there's one thing that did impact, but this year we've got a really good outcome on our W H S. Order basically and got a bigger bonus from the scheme in terms. Now, whether we what we did build in a bit of that ongoing, but from a risk perspective, we didn't build in the full amount ongoing. And so, look, we could, if we get a few years in a row, maybe we start to say, oh, that's actually our new position, but brings our employee cost down. Yeah, so that's how the orders want it. They want it as a negative employee cost when you get that bonus of, or the, sorry, the refund. So I would say, I I think. You're right, it's gone up by about six hundred thousand and it almost, there's only, there's a couple of areas where there's a slight uptick in. Sort of F T E that's covered by income sources, like childcare is one where utilization and things can cause both to go up. But the other amount literally is just a four point five percent wage increase. That is all that's different now.
I think it's worthwhile if we're not putting the contract, the cost and employee cost, if we look at E F T going forward. Where E F T on our books plus E F T not on our books being contractors, this is the total E F T of the organisation. Compared to budget because at the moment you can say, look, we're we're that low on employment cost, but it's just been banked in other expenses.
Yeah, and what I mean by that is it tends, the area where that happens is your outside guys. So they obviously have a service delivery obligation. And so if they've got. Someone suddenly leaves, you literally have to get labour hiring like the next week and you might have that labour hire on the books for. You know, that one for six weeks and then you get someone going on a work cover claim. And so it can build up, it doesn't sound like much, but you can build up a hundred grand in. Labour hire costs from offset by unexpected vacant positions quite quickly. And and to me, that's right. I think that the five fifteen point three or fifteen point four million we budgeted this year. Right amount and the F T is correct, but that during the year, the actual that you accumulate for labour cost can be a bit lower. But the F T didn't actually change.
Again, you're going to have some reference point back. I always look at, yeah, budget's budget, but what actually did happen? And that's where I go back and looking at the F T numbers themselves going forward. I I then go to. Page sixty three, this is where I got a little bit confused on the. Airport upgrade. What what's the sale of surplus assets for three mil sitting in there? Because I thought our our kick into the airport was two point four, so we'd have a net funding gap of two point four million dollars. On the upgrade of the airport.
Yep, so that's that is true, but then council had, I mean, this is, I mean, with the ultimate, I think disagreed with our position, but. Council had its position and that some of the the sale of the assets. Is a portion of it is being. Part of it, yeah, the twelve point whatever million.
Have we got the money?
Um, no, but Cathy, we have had discussions in the last week. We do know why it's being held up and happy to give it up.
That makes sense now. I forgot that was happening.
Yep, um, yeah, so that's that portioning, a portioning of that.
So if we, just for an understanding, what what's the level of rate gap? Non-collected. So at the moment, we've got caps in place and twenty six, twenty seven is the last year.
Yeah, so it's not, there's none not collected because it just gets reapportioned. So what what you end up doing, you overrate. Knowing that the cap, the the net has to come back to what your actual.
So the other people picking up the gap.
That's right. And so what it means is everyone takes three years to move to their ultimate position. Some people. The people that are going up go up slower and the people that are going down go down a little bit slower as well.
Makes sense. The only other one for me quickly is that we then look at the longer term. At numbers. And if you can just talk why you're looking at increasing C P I. Higher than twenty six, twenty seven and twenty seven, twenty eight compared to the current levels.
Yeah, so that is, I've sort of based that off R B A projections. So what they're saying at the moment is C P I is actually probably, if you look at. Trimmed means excluding volatile items, C P I would actually be higher than the two point five percent. And that will correct itself over the next twelve months as things like some of the electricity rebates and things like that abate. Look, if they happen at a different time, it might happen slightly differently, but that seems to be what, and and some of the banks, their projections around C P I are the same, that. Two point five at the moment is actually probably below trend. Next year will be about on trend, about that sort of. Just below three or around that three percent and then it will come back over that year after that or two, back to the two point five projected as the aim point. So. Look, that, and and the the plan itself is actually quite neutral for C P I in every year after year one. C P I being lower is a bit unneutral in year one because of the wage increase that's locked in. But the good thing is. I mean, there's actually a few good things I can talk about. I mean, we know C P I at the end of the year is moving to, we're getting rid of basically quarterly C P I and we'll only have monthly C P I. So. We'll have very up to date data at all times. So when we go into our E B negotiations next year. We should have very up to date information that helps feed into what we think we can accept as a negotiated position. And so then, you know, we should be doing all those things around the same time and the plan should be fairly neutral. If C P I did end up being a little bit lower. The plan can, will accommodate that.
But is a higher C P I good?
Um, I think it being higher is like minusculely better, but like, like I could literally change it and you hardly would notice it in the numbers like it's. In the sensitivity analysis, the C P I actually does very little.
So where my concern sits, I look on page a hundred. And I look at this year at three point one and the trade offs the council are making around those cost of living and stories compared to C P I's. And then I look at twenty seven where it's the jump between C P I and the rate increase. Think we'll be sitting here next year saying, well, if that is the real C P I number. How can we, in a cost of living crisis still, how can we push a three point eight rate increase onto our people? So. I think we've still got too much baked in to. Rate increases in future years where we should be taking the hard actions now. Because I don't think that is a real number the council will be willing to swallow or the rate payers will be willing to swallow in the future. Of those ongoing levels of rate increases above C P I. So it's just a statement or a conservation. And Laurie, I think that comes back to where you were.
I I concur one hundred percent with that. This is about, we're making choices. You can't make choices only one way. You've actually got to understand what the consequences of those choices are. And if we are, you know, lowering the rates or or getting less than C P I. What are the other choices we've made as a result?
Again, they're observations.
Yeah, and and the only thing I would say about that is, I look, I understand and I think that over the long term, that's council's aim is to get that figure. As close to C P I as possible. You know, we're coming from, a year ago, that was before we started that work during their last annual business plan cycle. That figure was one point. That figure was one point six percent above CPI every single year in the plan. And so, look, I, I don't disagree, but average, you know, that year, year two probably needs fixing. It's put an extra point two in it, that was sort of the last bit we hadn't pulled out, so it's point nine above CPI that year, but every other year it's point seven. Look, does it need more work over time and do we need to find other mechanisms to bring that down further? Probably yes, um, will we ever, I don't think we'll ever get it to CPI on average.
I, I, I agree, but you want to close.
But you know, if it's point five, you know, can people live with point five rather than point seven? So I, I, I don't disagree, but um I, I will say we have done a lot of work already over twelve months to get it down, so.
Not, not questioning.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
But these are observations, that's why, um, the general feel that the numbers are number and the rate increase is the rate increase. But this is, these are the observations and considerations of the committee.
And some of that might, and, and when you've talked about messaging, that might be some of the messaging as well, is that maybe when we get to next year, um, what we need to talk about with our constituents, with the rate payers is we, this is where we started from, this is the rate increases we were doing above CPI a couple of years ago. We're probably, we might have to live with it at this level for a couple of years and then we can look to, you know, maybe in the future projections as they look better, maybe then it can start to come down below that point seven to point five or whatever. But that's, again, once some of your messaging and your conversation with the rate base as well.
Well, this is what we're advocating to the straight federal government as well.
Yeah.
You know, it comes with that full story.
Yep.
Uh, I'll go back to you now if you wanted to add anything else.
No, I had the same view about messaging generally. Uh, so, yeah, it's about, we've made these decisions and that's the context. And the potential consequence will be next year that rates may not be able to keep this low unless we can generate more, you know, revenue, which we're planning to do by virtue of A, B and C.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yep.
And I think you've skinned, skinned down your focus. Um, so that's a good point, it's where revenue and costs are going to go in the future.
Yeah, and maybe I think as well, one thing I will say, I think we've probably pulled out a little bit of that focus around extra revenue because some of the things that happened over the last few months. But I, I still think some of those things are there, we've probably, they're probably just coming, they'll happen in a different way almost. So that's probably, you know, we've probably taken some of the focus off those additional rate revenue streams that we're expecting over the next couple of years and things. But if, while that, there might be less than there was going to be, I still think those are there. And, and like you say, the messaging can talk about, there's still that, some of that upside risk that we've probably not actually spoken about much in the document anymore.
I mean, you shouldn't underestimate the try and find the right word, but the, the difficulties that have, and the changes that have happened over this year.
Yeah.
And how that has made the whole picture a little more complicated.
More complicated, that's right, yeah.
Like that, you know, these are the, these are the areas that we're working on, these are the areas where there's risks and, and these are the consequences.
Yeah.
From the decisions that we're making, the potential consequences.
But like I say, but also that upside risk, like there, there is still, you know, the decisions that aren't, that's right.
But, you know, whenever you've got a liquid mix, you've got some risks, some risks, yep.
Oh, look, we, we don't underestimate the environment you've been operating in, not only this year, but past years.
Yeah.
Uh, what that does say is have a firm view on what you're going to do. And just let everything else slide that sits around that.
Yep.
And make sure the narrative is strong on that piece there.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd leave that um with you guys as well, which I think where Laurie started the discussion from. So Laurie, was anything else you wanted to add?
I think most of it's uh been covered, uh, thanks Grant. But yeah, again, my, my thing is very much it's around, we are about making choices and how we're communicating those choices. Um, and again, as, as Grant said, it's feedback that we're providing. Um, but yeah, nothing more at the moment.
Yeah, and I see the messaging is from the chief executive and the mayor, so to, to the, internally to the organisation and to the broader community as well. So I think there's a range of observations and comments there that hopefully have been picked up. Um, and we just have the the recommendation. What page will you on, Grant, can you help me?
Uh, yes, go back to the recommendation, how was it on, I must say sixteen or seventeen, seventeen?
Seventeen. Um, I think again, the audit committee recommends the council notes the audit committee's discussions as captured above.
Yep. In their consideration of the.
Yeah, annual business plan.
Budget, yeah, and then the A, B and C can go and it'll be in the main bit.
My A, B and C is in above, so it's above, so there's no need for A, B and C.
Yep.
So again, that'll come out in the minutes. Uh, can I have a mover? Thanks Laurie, a second to Pat, all those in favour, Sharon, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, she is, I think I said, I sure am, you're on me.
Yes, I am, yeah. Sorry, my camera's a bit slow today.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make a brief comment as well around the messaging. Um, I, you know, there's lots of uh comments around the messaging and as a council, that's something that we've been pushing quite quite a lot is messaging around all of the decisions that we make. Because we're, I find, and most of the other councillors are finding that an informed community is generally a much happier community. They might not like the decision that you've made, but if they know why you've made the decision, they tend to wear it a lot, a lot uh, a lot happier.
Spot on.
Hmm.
Uh, I think you're getting nods around the table with those comments, Sharon. Um, all right, we'll move now to item four point one. Um, we have a motion to go under confidence, thanks Laurie, second to Sharon, all those in favour, we're now in conference. Begging no other business, I'll close the meeting at ten fifty.
No.
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty.